Good evening. My name is Pete von Reichbauer and I'm the county council member for South King County. I want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, those of you who are in the audience and those watching on cable TV. Today, there were approximately 30 reported instances of domestic violence abuse in King County. That will be 11,000 cases each year. What would that number be if we knew about all of them, not just the reported ones? It's a little difficult to think about, but these are our friends, our neighbors, our coworkers. In our region, one in three murderers are a result of domestic violence. One in four women are victims of domestic abuse. While the most important and emotionally compelling element of domestic abuse is the human element, there is also a societal cost. More than $5.8 billion are spent each year in costs related to domestic abuse. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and Costs of Intimate Partner Violence Against Women in the United States, nearly $4.1 billion for the direct medical and mental health care services and nearly $1.8 billion is spent for the indirect costs of lost productivity and wages. Whether it's Milton or Medina, Shoreline or Seattle, this is a problem for all the communities of this county. South King County has been particularly hard hit on this, and it's really important to have as many folks involved, associations, show up today. And I want to thank so many organizations that are here today. Those organizations include the Refugee Women's Alliance, the King County Protection Order Office, the King County Coalition Against Domestic Violence, the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, the King County Sheriff's Office, Consuelo Counseling and Referral Service, Domestic Abuse Women's Network, and the Auburn Youth Resources. These organizations are also here to help serve you, and whether you're here in the building or watching us on TV, I hope you take advantage of the programs on their website. This is a town hall meeting. Throughout the year, I try to hold town hall meetings on issues of importance that people bring to our attention through questionnaires and calls. Each speaker will have 10 minutes to present their history, their involvement, and some of the thoughts from their perspective on this issue. After the second speaker, we will collect note cards and take those note cards for our questions. There's a lot of sensitive issues. I know some people would rather have written out, and we will read those questions. After the third speaker, we will then open up the process to answer those questions, and I will encourage each and every one of you to take the advantage of the expertise here at the front desk. Dan Satterberg is our King County prosecutor, and he has done an enormous job since being prosecutor to address this issue. But he's also done us one additional favor. He has the flu and he's not here. In his place is David Martin. David is a senior deputy prosecuting attorney for domestic violence unit at the King County Prosecutors' Office, and we really appreciate his being here, taking Dan's place, and we appreciate Dan not sharing everything going on in his life with us tonight. There are a number of elected officials who would have been here tonight, but as it happened because of the holiday Monday, so many of the city councils are meeting tonight. So there are some elected officials here tonight. I know there's at least one school board member I see and one former state representative here. Could you all stand up, those of you who have been or are currently elected officials? I want to thank you for being here and sharing. I would be remiss if I did not recognize that we have an old friend in Federal Way here, and we want to make sure everybody in the audience has a chance to settle in while we're doing that. This event has drawn a lot of people from a lot of agencies, private and public, but one agency is directly engaged in this process, and that's the Sheriff's Office. And I'm really pleased that the new sheriff of King County, in his first act, picked as his undersheriff someone very familiar with this issue because she taught it at the police academy, and she is someone very sensitive to South King County. Ann Kirkpatrick is a 30-year police officer. She had worked at Redmond, Ellensburg, Spokane, and is now the undersheriff of King County. She has served in high capacities as any officer, but she has broken many glass ceilings as the police chief of many cities. And Ann, please stand up. So we have a very -- and Ann will also participate later in answering some of the questions because it'd be very helpful to have her participation at that time, at this time. At this time, I'm going to ask the prosecutor's office to be represented. Mr. -- and Dan is going to have a chance to share some of his comments about his own personal history and his involvement, and from his agency, what they plan to do and are doing in the area of domestic violence.
Thank you, and good evening. And I wanted to thank Councilmember von Reichbauer before we get started because I think the opportunities to talk about domestic violence in a public setting are sometimes few and far between. It's a really difficult issue for people to talk about. There's a lot of people here tonight who have come out on a Tuesday evening. It's a beautiful day, and to come inside to be able to talk about a hard subject, I think is pretty remarkable. So, Councilmember, thank you very much for this great opportunity, and I also want to say I feel fortunate to stand in here for Dan today. He has spent his entire career devoted to issues involving victims of domestic violence and victims of sexual assault, and it's been a part of the prosecutor's office for a long time under Norm Mailing and now under Dan's stewardship, where it's been a high priority. And so, just to give you a little bit of an idea of what the King County Prosecutor's Office does in regards to domestic violence, we're the ones who are responsible for felony prosecution in King County. So essentially, that means that there's a domestic violence case where somebody ends up in the hospital, where there's a violation of a court order, where there's an assault, where there's sexual assault, where there's any instance where there's really a serious and grave danger at stake and there's a felony charge, we're the ones who are going to be handling it throughout the entire county. And I'm fortunate to be joined here this evening by an advocate from my office, Collette Gishwin-Bills, Sandra Shanahan, who heads up our protection order program, who I think is outside Manning the Desk, Brad Bales, who runs the south end of our office, Nikki Weston, a senior deputy, and Gabby Charlton, who is the liaison prosecutor for King County. To give a little bit of an idea about that, we also have a domestic violence court, or a specialized court, that's dedicated solely to domestic violence prosecution in King County District Court and specialized case handling at the felony level. The protection order advocacy program is also in two locations. There's Sandra down there, together with Tracy Orkat, who's our stop grant coordinator. And basically, what that program means is anytime somebody needs a protection order, they can come in and they can see the advocates that work with Sandra, both in the downtown courthouse and in South King County at the Mailing Regional Justice Center, and get assistance getting a protection order. So that's a civil order, and that's a way that people can respond to domestic violence on their own terms. They don't need to call the police to go get one. They can simply walk into the protection order advocacy program, they can get assistance with the form, they can go before the court and do that. I also wanted to talk a little bit about Ms. Charlton's program, which is a recent addition to my office and also a partnership with the City of Seattle. We have liaison prosecutors that coordinate with cities in South King County and with the City of Seattle under a federal grant and under some contracts. Pauline Freund, who's the city attorney for Federal Way, is here tonight as one of our partners in working on this grant. It's an effort for people to work together to try and focus on serious domestic violence cases and do a good job with those cases. It's very important and difficult work to do. Domestic violence, as Councilmember von Reichbauer was talking about, is an endemic problem throughout the state of Washington and throughout the nation. It's something that leads to homicides at a very high rate, leads to damage to families at a very high rate, causes impact on children that lasts for years and years, and is something that requires an entire community response to resolve. I started doing domestic violence work 15 years ago in Federal Way District Court before the City of Federal Way did their own prosecution of domestic violence cases like Pauline is doing today. The county did some of those cases, and I was a young prosecutor, and that's all I did was domestic violence cases. And I learned how difficult they were, how challenging they were, how rewarding it was to try and serve victims at the place that they were, and how important the issue was both to the Sheriff's Office, the City of Federal Way, to my office, and to all the people that I worked with, advocates and prosecutors alike. And it left a really significant impression upon me that this is an important issue. It's a life-changing issue for many people, but over time, I've also learned I'm not going to be able, and my office is not going to be able, to prosecute our way out of it. You're not going to have courtroom after courtroom filled with domestic violence prosecution cases and stop this from being societal ill. You're not going to be able to arrest your way out of it. City of Federal Way Police Department is represented here today, the Sheriff's Office is here today. They arrest many, many people on 911 calls, but that's only a fraction of the domestic violence that actually happens in a jurisdiction. King County is a big place. There are a lot of cases, about 11,000 incident reports a year, and you can't arrest your way out of it. We're also fortunate to be joined here tonight by Cheryl Bozarth, who's the executive director of Dawn, who's a South County Domestic Violence Agency. Dawn runs shelters. You're not going to be able to shelter every single victim of every single domestic violence case and shelter your way out of domestic violence. I think the only way that you can make any difference is by engaging people that you know in your neighborhood, friends, family, talking about the issue, not passing judgment on people that you know who are involved, potentially as victims of domestic violence, being patient with them, being helpful, learning about domestic violence as an important issue, and gathering like you're doing tonight. I think when we all get together and we talk about difficult issues like domestic violence, the community benefits, you'll all go home hopefully and be able to talk about why this is an important issue, not just for those of us who do it for a living, but because it matters. It matters a great deal. And so, I thank Councilmember von Reichbauer for the opportunity to talk about it. I'm looking forward to the question and answer session later on. Thank you.
It's been suggested we hold the mic a little closer, and our next speaker is Cheryl Bozarth. Before starting at Dawn in July of 2010, Cheryl was the executive director of Dove House in Jefferson County, and prior to that was the outpatient mental health program director for Sutton Place Behavioral Health, which provides child and family services. Cheryl also served as the 2010-11 Board President of the Washington State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Cheryl believes the issues facing DV in today's environment includes moving towards prevention, focusing on implementing best practices based on research, and increasing community engagement. Please join me in recognizing Cheryl Bozarth.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much, Councilmember, for putting this evening together. Domestic violence is something that, you know, those of us that do this work talk about all the time, and that word can just kind of roll off our lips, but we understand that that's a really hard topic for your average person to think about and certainly even to talk about. So I wanted to just take a couple minutes and share how I got into doing this work, and then a little bit on our perspective. So after a very brief career in the for-profit computer industry, I decided that I wasn't quite cut out for that. And I went back to graduate school and I studied to become a therapist, and so my very first job was working at what we called in Florida the alternative school for children with severe mental health problems. And to me, that was like my dream job. I got to work with kids and had a schooltime schedule, and that was great, and I'm going to do all these wonderful therapeutic interventions that I fancied when I was in graduate school. And then I got on the job and I found out, so, a lot of these kids aren't really all that broken. It's really the life they go to when school day's over that's half the problem. And so, I learned pretty early on after graduate school that I could do all the interventions I wanted with kids, but if they were going home to violent homes, I was just going to start all over the next day. So I found out that I was doing domestic violence work, even though that's not what I set out to do. So fast forward, and my family and I moved across country, and I had the opportunity to take a position as executive director for what was then the Jefferson County Domestic Violence Program. And I was fortunate enough to be selected for that, and I spent five years in that role, and that organization is now called Dove House Advocacy Services. And I learned a lot in that time. I thought I was doing DV work, but not as deeply as I learned at Dove House. And then in 2010, I came over here to work for Dawn here in South King County, and I feel very privileged to serve this community. So I come to this from a place of understanding, like in my being, that whether we think we're doing domestic violence work, if you're in Human Services, you're doing domestic violence work. And so, it makes sense for us to have some agreements and some collaborations and some partnerships so that we can do that work in the smartest way. And for us at Dawn, we serve victims primarily, but that's not the only thing that we do. Our focus is on intimate partner relationships because we know that the overwhelming majority of crimes and victimization involve men's violence against women. And that's really hard to say, and I don't want any of our male friends and partners and allies to receive that as an indictment. It's really an invitation into this process and into this work, and it's a sincere and heartfelt invitation. So we serve survivors, and on average, our crisis line in a year gets about 11,000 calls. So as David says, we're not going to answer enough calls to serve every victim. We're just not. I think I did the math one time, and that's about 1.3 calls every hour of every day, 365 days a year. Like, that's a lot. There's no way to do that alone. So we need the community, we need the support, we need the partnership. We provide top-notch services for victims from shelter, crisis line, legal assistance service for immigrant survivors and all of that, but all of that's not enough. We really need to work on prevention, and we have to do that together. And we have to have men as a part of this work, because if women could have done it alone, we've been at it for 30-some years, we would have done it by now. We need all of the people in our community, men, women, boys, and girls, to weigh in on these issues and to lend some support. And there are some concrete things that we can do. So I'll give everybody here my last couple minutes, because, you know, I'm a DV director, so there's going to be a little task, right? So the first one is, somebody's talking to you, and you believe that they might be a victim of domestic violence, but one thing you can do is just listen. Listen without blaming or condemning. There's a lot of healing that can happen when somebody just gets a chance to tell their story. Another thing that you can do as you're walking around in your average, normal life, you're in the Quickie Mart, or you're in the mall, or you're at work, or wherever you are, and you hear that comment, or that story, or that joke that's inappropriate, or sexist, or any of those things that keep attitudes in our community that foster violence, just challenge it in your own way, whether that be humor, whether that be straight-on, whichever way feels comfortable for you. Figure out how to say, you know, "I don't think I'm okay with what you said." So if we could just each agree to do those two things, I believe in the core of my being that that added to some systemic efforts and engaging all of our community will make a difference in changing the norms that need to be changed to ultimately end domestic violence, and I think we can do that. Thank you.
I've been advised that we need to speak a little louder because of the microphone here, and I'm giving signals, and so we will proceed. I want to thank you for your remarks, and our next and last speaker before we get into the issues with the Q and A is Moja de Ashkoyan, whose name is as difficult to pronounce as von Reichbauer, and I appreciate that. Moja is the supervising attorney for the Northwest Immigrant Rights Project Violence Against Women's Act. She has worked for Northwest Immigrant Rights Project for the past seven years and holds a law degree from Seattle University. Northwest Immigrant Rights Act Violence Against Women currently provides direct services, outreach, and education throughout the state of Washington. The unit currently has over 900 cases and processes the following case types: self-petitions under VAVA, visas, special immigration juvenile status, and application for adjustment of status, and quite a few others that she'll outline. Please join us and join someone who reflects the changing culture of Federal Way. Many of us in this audience that I know of, who I first met, you know, 40 years ago in Federal Way, have seen the fact that Federal Way now has 40 languages, almost 100 languages in school district today, and some of the issues that Moja affects is directly aimed at the changing culture of this South King County and the concerns and the issues that bring so many people to this agency because of the issues that they have perhaps brought from different cultures into our region, and it's an opportunity for this agency, and for those of us not familiar with this agency, to learn about the great things it's doing to recognize that no matter how you pronounce the word "domestic violence," it's not acceptable in any culture.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for this forum, actually, for us to all discuss about domestic violence. I specifically work with immigrant survivors of DV, you know, who have to overcome hurdles of language barriers and cultural barriers and so forth and so on, and also to talk about how we do collaborate together as-is and how we can move forward from where we are. So as Councilmember mentioned, I am an attorney with Northwest Immigrant Rights Project. Our agency is the only statewide agency that provides comprehensive immigration services to low-income immigrants. We have different offices. We have two offices in eastern Washington, one in Granger, one in Moses Lake. We have an office in Tacoma that works with detained immigrants in Northwest Detention Center, and we have our main office here in Seattle that works with immigrants, providing a variety of services, not all DV-related. We provide assistance with immigrants who want to naturalize, for family petitions, asylees, and refugees. We have a whole unit doing outreach services, just because we know that the need is very great and that there are many in our community who do not know what services are available to them and what rights they have. So our outreach unit has radio programs, one in Mount Vernon, I believe, with KSVR, another in Granger with Radio Cadena. We provide outreach when we are asked by community members, and those are actually really the best ones for us because we already know that the interest is there, right? So we, every single staff member often goes to churches, mosques, temples, community events, cultural events, right, and just talk about what kind of immigration relief is available for those who are not citizens. And then we have the Violence Against Women's Act, unit of NERP, in which I work. We work with immigrant survivors who qualify for immigration relief under either Violence Against Women's Act, VAVA, or Victims of Trafficking and Violent Crimes Act, VTVP-A, actually Protection Act. So immigrants that we represent, excuse me, immigrants that we represent are people who qualify to either self-petition for themselves, as if a family member was petitioning, right, because the family member turns out to be abusive. So we are talking about immigrants who have been or are being abused by their United States citizens or lawful permanent resident spouses, children, or parent. We are talking about immigrants who have been victims of crimes, including domestic violence, where they assisted law enforcement in investigation and/or prosecution of the crime. And we also represent immigrants who qualify for asylum because either they were a victim of domestic violence in their home country, or they were a victim of domestic violence here, but because of prosecution, the abuser has been deported to the home country, and now the survivor is afraid to return, right? We also represent children who have been abandoned or neglected by one or both parents. There's a special immigrant juvenile status for those children, but they do have to be dependent on state. As Councilmember mentioned, our caseload at the moment, we are a unit of three attorneys and two accredited representatives, is over 900. Our waitlist is over 200. It's ever-expanding, but we do try our best to serve as many people as quickly as we can. So we are a very imaginative bunch of people. One of the things that we decided to do a few years back was to create this collaborative effort with DV agencies who were also working with our clients, right? So we had clients being referred by agencies to us, but the client had already done most of the work with the agency, right? The advocates who were working with the clients already knew their personal history, had the documents gathered, and then they would refer the client to us, but the client had to start all over with us again. So we started this collaboration in which we trained the advocates and assist them on a continual basis, and the advocates will, when gathering those documents and life stories, they keep it and put a packet together and send it to NERP with the client. That way, the client will not have to stay on our waitlist. So we have been able, I think in this project, we have been able to help 800 immigrant survivors in the past four years to gather, you know, to get their documentation, without having, you know, to wait for over a year or two on our waitlist before we can even get to It is the most important thing for an immigrant survivor to feel that they are not under constant threat of deportation all the time, right? And to have the stability and the security to think that they can work legally in this country. The work that we have done with the King County Prosecutor's Office, the work that we are doing with the DV agencies, have all been extremely helpful to help immigrants feel safer, immigrant survivors to feel safer, and to feel free that they can come forward, actually, and talk about what they have suffered through, right? And feel strong enough to not think that, you know, if I do this, if I, the abuser is threatening me that if I ever call, they will call the police, or they will call the Immigration and Customs Enforcement and have me deported, right? So it is very important for them to feel that security that, you know, I can call law enforcement for my own protection, and I'm not going to get deported because of it. The word spreads in the community that way, right? So, you know, when we help 15 or 20, 100 more survivors will hear about it, that, "Oh, you know what? I didn't get deported. I was actually helped," you know, "when I reported my abuser." And, you know, hence we have even a longer waitlist, but the word is getting out and we are all very happy. Thank you.
At this time, I'm encouraging those who want to answer or ask the questions by cards, to get the cards you have, and they'll be picked up by some of our friends here, so please, if you have cards, just hold them up and people will pick them, and also those who want to ask questions in person, we will go through that process as well. While we do that, I want to recognize While we do that, I want to recognize some other individuals here who play a role in this. And this is a synergy of effort by so many people, both uniformed, non-uniform, people in the community that helped address this issue. And those of us in South King County are particularly proud of the fact that we have an organization that does provide a bridge for many families, and that's bridge is called Fusion. And I want to recognize Peggy LaPorte, who along with her group do so much for so many with so little. Thank you. We're also fortunate that uniformed officers are also here tonight in South King County that also play a role. And I'd like to have both Ed Plumley, representing as Deputy Chief, the Fire Department, and of course Andy Kwan, the Deputy Chief of our Police Department, to please stand up We have had a long range of public officials at the county, city, and state level, and I want to thank someone who's taken the time to join us tonight after working in Olympia all day, and that is Representative Linda Kochmar. So, now we have the questions. I need my glasses. And I'm going to ask any one of you or all of you to respond to the specific questions, so if that's all right with you. And Cheryl will give you the first shot always. What can be done to get domestic violence awareness into our elementary schools, junior highs, and high schools? D.V. is a learned behavior. Kids have no tools to deal with it, and they need to learn that it is not normal, and their parents need help. Cheryl, we'll go to you, and then David, and then Moja.
So, that's a really great first question, because whenever we talk about prevention, we want to, you know, try and get some learning and some knowledge in as early as we possibly can. And, you know, and it is true that we find that if we're introducing healthy relationship concepts in like 11th and 12th grade, well, you know, some kids have been dating for quite a while before that timeframe. So, elementary school would seem an appropriate time. I feel like, well, I will say that I believe that there are a lot of different types of good and evidence-based and research-based curriculums that can do that skills-building and knowledge-building in that early age timeframe. And so, in my opinion, as to why we don't currently have that in a systematic way, you know, we do have it anecdotally. Our agency even does some of that work. But we don't have it in a systematic way, in my opinion, just my opinion, because we haven't decided to prioritize that just yet. And it takes time, it takes energy, it takes effort, it takes resources, but I believe that there could be a place in a regular health curriculum for that kind of skill-building and learning. I believe that there are advocacy agencies like mine who would be very happy to partner in making that happen. And I believe that when we get our heads wrapped around it as a priority and develop the community will around it, then we will do it in a systematic way, and in that way make a bigger dent in preventing domestic violence.
I also very much agree with Cheryl. It's like what we were discussing a little bit earlier. You're not going to be able to prosecute or arrest your way out of this. You need to reach young people, you need to change social norms. But there's things that you can do at kind of every level. At the state level, there is a Washington Traffic Safety Commission that's been very effective in reducing things like rates of accidents and deaths and all sorts of things throughout our state by promoting good driving practices. That's a really important part of our state's response. We don't have a statewide prevention effort like we do a traffic safety effort. Traffic safety is really, really important, but I'd also submit that domestic violence prevention is just as important. At the local level, agencies like mine, like the King County Prosecutor's Office, law enforcement should be partnering with community-based agencies to do prevention efforts. I know coming up this spring and this summer, Dawn is going to be launching prevention efforts with the King County Prosecutor's Office is going to be there with them. We're trying to be there with other agencies like LifeWire and others to encourage prevention efforts. We've partnered with friends like the Refugee Women's Alliance to do outreach. Our friends are here tonight who have done outreach in many different communities across King County, trying to send a message that domestic violence is something that shouldn't be tolerated, and we should promote healthy activities. And I'd also say the last point, this is something that schools should take on as their own issue. This is an important thing that every single student, for the most part, is going to deal with in the course of their life, healthy relationships, how to communicate, how to learn skills regarding healthy relationships. It should be taught, it should be embraced, it's an enormous social problem. And if we're not investing on the front end, that means my office, the Police Department are just going to be reacting on the back end, and that's really expensive. And when things are that broken, it's really hard to fix them again. So, I would rather not keep fixing things.
I absolutely agree with Cheryl and David, and do not have much more to add, except to give you examples of how we see such situations at NARP. You know, many of our clients bring their children as interpreters for them. And we see the effect of D.V. on the child, and I'm talking about a child who is, I don't know, between like seven and 13 years old, right? So, either this boy, let's say, learns to really internalize the suffering that he not only has witnessed his mother go through, but is now hearing his mother repeat, right? Or we have had many situations in which the children act out the way they have seen their role model act out. So, it is a very necessary. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to read these questions we have here, but I also want to make sure that if anybody wants to stand up and ask any questions, they have that opportunity as well. Next question is, I am a survivor of a domestic violence and have, I'm interested in speaking to victims and children of domestic violence. Are there such programs available? Do any of you want to respond to that? Is there programs that they could speak to? Thank you.
So, local domestic violence agencies usually try and prioritize the experience and the wisdom of survivors talking to survivors. You know, it's really helpful to know that somebody's already walked where you've walked. And so, if somebody here is interested in that, they can sign up at our table, we'll offer some training, we'll figure out the appropriate ways to get you connected, because we think that that can be helpful on both sides.
Other question is, how much have the laws changed to help victims since 1993? I was a victim then, and it seems so much different now that I'm a survivor of 10 years.
That's a great question, and I guess, because I'm one of two lawyers up here, I can try and respond to it. You know, Washington State has really been a leader in domestic violence response at the legal level. In the early 90s, there were laws passed surrounding protection orders and things like that, and really raising the priority of domestic violence response. Those followed laws in the late 1970s that really said that domestic violence wasn't just something that should be kept in the home, but should be just as important as any other part of law enforcement response. And actually, it's one of the areas in the law that says that domestic violence should be a priority, that victims are entitled to the maximum protection under the law, and that law enforcement and prosecutors and the justice system are supposed to communicate the fact that domestic violence is not to be tolerated. So, it says that actually in the law. It's one of the few places that the attitude of the system is being directed. Since 1993, there's been a number of changes. The level of sanction or punishment for felony offenses has dramatically increased for recidivist offenders. We've seen new laws be created for strangulation and suffocation for those who are repeat violators of no-contact orders. In addition, there have been a lot of laws created to support shelter services, to support the confidentiality of domestic violence advocates, to improve the funding for those agencies, and how those agencies work with the larger social service community. So, it hasn't just been a criminal justice response, and there's still a lot of work to do in improving criminal justice response, both in the legal level statewide, and I know even some of that is happening this session with removing the marital rape exception, with also improving Washington stalking laws. So, there are improvements that are happening all the time, and the legislature has really been very aggressive in how it responds to this area, but we can always do more, and we can try and get better.
Thank you. I was trying to recognize that we do have someone who has taught at the academy, and I was going to ask Ann to come up here maybe, because we're dealing with a law enforcement issue, and legislators can pass legislation, but it's the person who is enforcing it that's interesting to hear from. And Ann, we're putting you on the spot because we didn't have a chance to talk much about this, but Ann and I had talked before the tonight's meeting, and maybe she can share some personal observations, not only because of her training, but also the fact that she has been an officer from the street up and understands how this issue affects the officers as well. Ann?
Well, thank you. First of all, like everybody else, Councilmember, thank you for even hosting this. This is wonderful. I was the chief of police of Federal Way, and you have one of the best police commanders right here from Federal Way, but you have wonderful executive leadership in this community, no doubt. So, it's my honor. I was a, I crossed my 30 years of being a police officer last year, and I remember being a young policewoman in Memphis, Tennessee, and going to domestic violence calls where there were no laws. And someone would come to the door, and you could tell they were obviously bloodied. And our response as police officers was, we didn't see it happen, you can go and get a court order, and we left. So, the whole inculcation of a police officer today has totally changed. Yes, through that mandatory arrest law changed the inculcation of the mindset of law enforcement. And by that, what I mean is, we removed discretion from a police officer. And if anything has changed, the importance and the emphasis of domestic violence and trying to break that cycle, it was that one particular law. And I did teach, I came to Washington State, and I was assigned out for a part of my tenure to the police academy, and I was one of those original officers who taught police officers around the state of Washington the law, which was, you have no discretion. So, we've seen an evolution. I'm very grateful for the collaborated approach to it. Love your statement very much, I don't know you, Cheryl, but about the fact that kids go back into the broken home. And that's where the violence has to be addressed and broken. So, thank you, and answer any other law enforcement question, or Andy, who also has a plethora of history and background, he'd be great.
Thank you very much. I have some other cards here, but I wondered if anybody in the audience had any question they wanted to raise themselves. If they have, I will take this moment to do that. We do have a number of cards that I'm going to respond to, but if anybody wanted, yes, ma'am?
I've been a survivor for 24 years. I'm now working in my community, which is Federal Way. A lot of these women and children are so afraid to call even the police, and they're so controlled by their spouses, and they've never heard of none of these, you know, resources. So, how do we, I got all the resources, I've been giving it to them. A lot of them don't have phones, don't have cards, they're not allowed to go very far. So, how do we help them?
Okay, I'm going to give everybody a chance to do that. The reason we held this meeting, the last meeting I held was on gang violence, and it was an opportunity for a lot of people to learn about some of the resources available then. We're very lucky that the Federal Way Mirror is here tonight, and I'm sure that there'd be some stories about that issue and some of the opportunities of the resources that are available here. But you all heard the question? Cheryl? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. So, I think what you're talking about is that challenge of outreach into communities that the individual survivors may really, really lack resources, the communities have a whole, may not have a whole lot of knowledge about what's available. And so, in that way, you know, we try and do the best that we can in terms of outreach. And so, that might mean that in an instance, in one particular community, one survivor who got the resource information can take it back to her friends and her friends' friends and family members, and someone like you who's rooted in that community. We will give you thousands upon thousands of cards, if you will take them from us, to take back with you. Call the 800 number, or call the local line, 425-656-STOP. Somebody's going to answer that phone 24 hours a day, and just make that one little step forward, and there are people like us who will, you know, meet you the rest of the way. So, person to person, that's how we believe some of this is broken down, and people reach the resources that they need to reach.
It's a really important question, because that's, I think, one of the reasons we're gathered here tonight, where we want to do a better job of responding to domestic violence in the community, if you can't arrest your way out of it, if no one's going to call, right? You can't shelter your way out of it if they don't know the number to the shelter or hotline. And so, I think having public awareness around these things is critically important, and it's especially difficult to do when the priorities are other places, right? And it's difficult to do also when you have a really diverse community like we have here in South King County, so many different people from all around the world who come here and want to make a life for themselves here. But they shouldn't have to live in danger, and they shouldn't have to live in fear. So, there's a couple of things, I guess I would say, is there's always a need for good public service announcements, for good engagement in the community, like Cheryl was talking about. But it's also important that the justice system works with community partners to make sure these things are going to be available. My office, the King County Prosecutor's Office has worked with the Northwest Immigrant Rights Project, and local King County police agencies, to make sure that those immigration protections that victims of domestic violence need to feel comfortable in order to report, so when they call the police, they're not going to feel like they're going to be deported. If we can change the culture surrounding that, that's something we really want to do. The whole purpose of those laws is to make sure that there's confidence that when an immigrant survivor of domestic violence has something terrible happen to them, they can pick up the phone like anybody else, they can call 911, and they can have their safety be paramount, the accountability be paramount, and not anything else. And so, we're working really hard with NARP and with others, and we want to make sure to do a good job, but I think that's just one part of it. Another part is to make sure that people can have different paths to the same end. It's not just being able to call the police or your local prosecutor's office, that's not the right path for many people, and many people don't, they don't call at all. For over 20 years, my office has had a protection order advocacy program. Sandra Shanahan is here tonight. And what that program is, is you don't need to call the police, you can come into the courthouse, and if people want to get a protection order, which is a really powerful document, you can't have contact with somebody, petition a court to do it, but it's complicated. We have people to help. People can go to protectionorder.org is our website. It's a great website, and they can get good information about protection orders in Seattle, protection order response here in Kent or in South King County. Every year, we serve well over 5,000 people who come into the office asking for help. Many of them end up in court. So, year after year, if you think about a program that's been going on for over 20 years, over 100,000 people, and this is something that the King County Council has funded and supported for many years. It's not something you would think of a prosecutor's office doing, but it's something we've done for a long time because it works, and it's effective. But you need more of those things available in the community.
We have a couple of remaining questions I want to ask, and then again, if anybody in the audience has questions, we'll in the audience has questions, we'll take precedent. This question is, "I would like to know how a person can be stalked, harassed, life-threatening, and law enforcement community people just act like it's nothing that can be done year after year? How can no one, how come no one would help?" And obviously, this is where some of the organizations come into play. Cheryl, do you want to begin? And maybe offer the opportunities that you provide if someone has this kind of situation.
So, the question's about stalking, right? So stalking, that's really, really, really difficult, and very frustrating, and very frightening. So whomever's question this is, I can certainly understand your frustration, I can understand the fear of kind of living day to day, not knowing if this is the day that's going to be the worst day. I can also, you know, say that in its complication, there are a lot of moving parts to it, and without knowing the details of any particular situation, I can offer some, you know, general things that our agency could provide in terms of support. So we work with survivors of stalking all the time. We can provide that emotional support, first of all, you're not crazy, yeah, somebody might really be stalking you, and they may really be out to hurt you. And that's helpful, having someone listen fully to you. We can offer some of the knowledge and wisdom that we have about how to document, how to support law enforcement efforts to bring justice about, and offer some advocacy support to walk with whomever that survivor is going through that situation. So those are things that I know that our agency is able to do, and willing to do. So, you know, if you're here and Dawn is an option for you, you know, we'd like to try and help you with it, if we can.
I'm going to throw up one question, and David, you can answer both of these, because it's a law enforcement question. It says, "Does law enforcement of domestic violence apply the same to both single and married individuals?" And then you may want to respond also to the previous question.
Yes, the laws regarding domestic violence apply the same to both single and married people. In some states, though, it's a good question, because in some states it's different. In some states, they don't recognize a dating relationship as part of domestic violence, that it's only those who are within a marriage. Washington has a pretty broad definition of domestic violence. It's not just marriage or dating relationship, it's family or household member. And that's been the definition here for a very long time, and is something that has worked for the people of Washington State. What I'd like to say, and I really wish Dan was here tonight, I know he's at home with the flu, but he is really advocated for changes in Washington stalking laws. One of the problems in stalking cases is identifying what is happening to a victim of stalking. If someone is engaging in harassment, sometimes there's many police reports across many different jurisdictions. Here in King County, we have 39 police jurisdictions. That's a whole lot of different departments who would have to coordinate and get together and potentially respond to a case. One of the reasons for that is there's not, there's not an order that a victim of stalking can go get, like there is for a protection order, or a domestic violence no contact order. Stalking victim usually has to get something called an anti-harassment order. It's a very general order, and they're important, but it doesn't identify for the police or the criminal justice system what that victim is experiencing. In the legislature right now, and I understand it's progressing through both the House and the Senate, is a bill focused on stalking response, improving Washington stalking laws, increasing the sentencing for those laws, and also providing a stalking protection order for victims. So they can go into court, they can have that protection, they can have that identification, so when law enforcement responds, they know what they're dealing with. It's a way to coordinate efforts, to streamline the process, and to make things better, which often is the exact opposite that's happening in stalking cases. So you're trying to improve that, and I know Dan was down in the legislature talking with victims of stalking, addressing the legislature, and also surviving family members of homicide victims, all because this is incredibly serious part of our criminal justice response.
Were there any other questions from the audience before we do? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My name's Anna, I live for a law enforcement agency in Tacoma, and I want to tell you a little scenario, is that I was working with a family with a child that was about four or five years old, that said that his father was hitting his stepmother, and his mother is involved with a marriage dissolution. So he was explaining that, you know, Dad is hitting so-and-so, and he's actually imitating some of the body movements as far as going down, and he was crying, and when it was time to leave, he actually urinated on himself. So I called the intake line, Washington State, the light-hearted harm number, and they told me two things. One, they took the report, and they said that, "Did he use the word afraid?" And I said, "No, he didn't." And then they said, "Did the actual mother, his stepmother, complain?" And I said, "No, I haven't spoken to her." And what they said was that, "It is not illegal for a man to beat his wife in the state of Washington if she does not complain." I also spoke to the social worker, and she said, "You know, I think that what's going on is that they're just having a horrible dissolution, and they're using the state of Washington to fight their battles." But this little fiber child, I actually witnessed him saying that he wasn't afraid, but what was going on, that his stepmother was crying, and she was complaining. Is that true? Is it not, if a woman doesn't complain, is it not illegal?
Who wants to begin that? Cheryl? And then David?
So, no, that's not true. You know, our laws exist such that, you know, back in the old days where the victim had to press charges kind of thing, and all of the barriers to justice and safety that that situation was, you know, as our work has evolved over the last couple of decades, you know, we've learned that that burden of prosecution does not necessarily rightly belong on the victim. So that's not necessarily the case. Now, obviously, I don't know the situation, I don't know the people involved in it, but that part's not true. But I will have to say that there are a lot of really good and valid reasons why people who are victims of domestic violence don't choose to contact law enforcement. And so as a victim service agency, that's not a requirement to seek services with us or seek support with us at all. You know, you don't have to become involved in law enforcement, or you don't have to become involved in the criminal justice process, because each survivor knows best for him or herself whether participating in the criminal justice process is the right and/or safe thing for them to do at any given moment in time. And as a victim services provider, we always want to honor that. Survivors know how to keep themselves alive. They managed to do it before they got to me, so I want to help them along with their process instead of interfering with it.
That's a great response. Everybody up here thinks that was the way to do it. Any other questions from the audience? Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know if there are any services specifically to reach out to older women and also women with disabilities?
That's a good question. Cheryl, you're our expert tonight. Thank you, very good question.
So yes and yes. As far as the older women is concerned, Dawn had a program back a couple of years ago that was called the Abuse in Later Life Program. And, you know, so it was a grant-funded program, and we worked that program for quite a while, and had support groups specifically for survivors who were, I think it was like 50 and over, which that's kind of scary to think about as being older, the closer I get to it. But, at any rate, so the funding for that program ended, but we kept that expertise, you know? So we have advocates and volunteers who are trained to work with older survivors. We kept that institutional knowledge going at our agency, and I believe that a lot of other agencies have also been trained in doing that work. So I think those services are pretty accessible, and the same is true for survivors with disabilities as well.
Thank you. You know, it's, those of you familiar with the Old Testament, talks about Jacob died leaning on his staff. This program didn't die, it actually came alive because of my staff. And please, before we end tonight, I want to recognize Maria for all the work she did, and Josh for assisting her. Thank you, Josh. We have a lot of unique resources outside afterwards, so what I'd like to do is to close this program, and give each one of these participants, these experts in their field, maybe share two or three minutes of observation, comments, and then they're all going to be available after the meeting for those of you who have particular special interests that you want to bring to their attention. With your permission, we'll begin. Thank you.
So kind of, you know, keying off the theme around prevention and collaboration that we've had going this evening, I just want to share a little bit about Dawn and the prevention aspect. So we have as a part of our strategic plan for 2012 through 2016, to focus our efforts on engaging our community to take initiative around domestic violence, and include our communities in prevention work specifically, and in particular, to engage men and boys in this prevention work. So we understand that prevention means a coordinated, strategic effort across the community, and it's going to work best if we include strategies that are at the individual level, at the community level, at the law enforcement level, at the public policy level, and do that consistently and over time, and dedicate ourselves to that, because that's the only way we're going to get in front of this. I was thinking, and I said this at a talk I had a few weeks ago, that when I was watching the inauguration, you know, it had me all nostalgic about civics and American history and all of that, and I began to think about the Declaration of Independence and how it says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." Okay, so at the time when that was written, that was so not true. That was not true. But all of us hear those words, and they are aspirational to us, and as aspirational as they were at the time that they were written, because those words were about what ought to be, and how we dedicate ourselves diligently and consistently over time to what ought to be, until that becomes what is. It ought to be so that we live free from domestic violence in our communities. And I totally believe that if we cooperate together and work consistently towards it, that ought to be will become what is. Thanks.
You know, we at NARP work for immigrants' rights, and I specifically work with immigrant survivors, and we couldn't do this work if we weren't collaborating with other agencies who do similar work, and the community at large. NARP is able to help this many people because we are supported by an entire community, and we are very grateful. Thank you.
So I was really glad I didn't have to follow Cheryl.
Thanks.
In all seriousness, I think what each of us does in our professional lives in responding to domestic violence is very meaningful to each of us. We're very passionate about it. If you all were to stay here for the next three hours, we'd talk to you about it until you just wanted to go home. And I guess to those of you here, though, and who are listening to this at home, my ask to you is to go and do what we talked about, and go raise awareness. Go do something to support awareness about domestic violence. There are people here tonight who give money to local service agencies like Dawn and like others to support the really great work that they do to end domestic violence in our community. If you're part of a PTA, put it on your agenda. If you're part of a local group, whether it's Rotary, or you name it, put it on your agenda as something to talk about and respond to. There's numerous events here in South King County, in East King County, in North King County. Plenty of people are out marching, raising money, trying to do their best to respond to this issue, but they cannot do it alone. And the only way any of this changes is if you go home, and you take it upon yourself to talk to your friends and talk to your family, and have those hard conversations. Be patient and listen to what people are saying to you. It's too important just to listen to people like me talk about it, you've got to go do it yourself. So please go do that.
I want to thank everyone here, because by taking the time out tonight to be here, you've already demonstrated your involvement. In fact, you've demonstrated your commitment. You know, you don't have to be a uniformed officer, you don't have to be a senior citizen, you don't have to be a young student. Every one of us can get involved in this process, and there's not one single family that has not been affected by domestic violence. We can make a difference. Thank you. [music]